To spend about an hour with us to talk about the very important issue of affordable housing. So we are going to get started because these, our candidates are busy folks as we're getting closer to the election. So again, welcome to the CDCB Annual Brownsville Election Candidates Forum. We're excited to have everybody here today. Both the candidates as well as, as our guests. Each year, CDCB is invited candidates for the City Commission to visit with us in different ways about issues concerning low to moderate income residents of our city and how these concerns and dreams always revolve around the issues of financial security and the creation of wealth for each of these families. CDCB's main work is concentrated in the housing arena and we focus on how to use affordable housing as a path to increase wealth for individuals, families and the city. In order to give everyone here tonight the size and the interest of this topic for Brownsville residents, I want to share a quick stat. Last March 2020, CDCB had forty-five new applicants that wanted to buy a house, complete our pre-application online. This was a pretty good month, pretty big number for a city our size. We were excited. However, this past March in 2021, CDCB had two hundred and eighty-five applicants completing a pre-application online. A six-hundred percent increase. This issue is one of the most important for our young and growing population and becoming more important as the cost of housing is rising. A little bit about who we are, those of you who don't know, CDCB has been operating since nineteen seventy-four and we are the largest nonprofit producer of affordable housing for homeownership in the state of Texas. And one of the largest producers of housing for all types in Cameron County. CDCB has a combined total asset value of just under ninety million dollars. In just the past ten years alone, CDCB has originated over eighty-seven million dollars in first lien mortgages and small dollar loans. CDCB has been, has awarded another twenty-five million dollars in grants to low-income families to build their new home or rehabilitate their old home. We have developed over forty-five million dollars in new rental properties for low-income families. And over the, and over the past ten years, we have graduated over a hundred and fifty students from our youth bill program and assisted over thirty thousand people with financial coaching and counseling. And in just the past ten months, since the start of COVID-19, CDCB has assisted over two hundred and fifty families with nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in COVID emergency rental and mortgage assistance relief. All combined over the past ten years, CDCB has driven a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars into the local economy, building and/or financing affordable housing for about fifteen hundred families, bringing financial education to another thirty thousand people, as well as generating over twenty million dollars in property taxes. And today you are participating in CDCB's newest project, People, Policy, Power, or P3. CDCB approaches, our approach to public policy engagement that focuses on issues of wealth creation for families living in the Rio Grande Valley. P3 produces issued focus fact sheets, webinars, blog posts, and policy recommendations for local, like our guest today, state and federal elected officials and departments. I want to thank the candidates for joining us today and I want to lay down just a few ground rules before we start. This is not a debate and we do not have any gotcha questions. Actually, we supplied all the questions to the candidates beforehand because we wanted them to fully engage in this conversation. And by supplying the questions beforehand, we figured then we hoped that the candidates would have done some research into the issue of affordable housing and how as they, how, how they as possible elected officials of our city can improve the affordable housing situation for residents. If members of the audience have questions, please put those in the, in the chat function and we'll get to those before we end tonight. I now want to ask the candidates to take one minute to introduce themselves and I will call you out in alphabetical order. Please just take the minute or less and we want to get to the, we really want to get to the meat of our conversation. So I am going to call on those who are, I'm not sure everybody who's here. So is Mr. Cardenas here? Mr. Castro?
Yes, I am here.
Great. Take a minute to introduce yourself? That'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you so much for having this forum and the opportunity to, you know, share one's platform. My name is Adasmo Castro. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Brownsville. I was, grew up and raised down southmost. All my schooling, my public education schooling has been here in the city of Brownsville. I have a bachelor's degree in Christian Studies from Austin Graduate School of Theology. I think that I am well versed in regards to the everyday happenings of the city of Brownsville because of the constant communication that I have with folks throughout the city. And I'm very, very proud to be running this, this race with fellow commissioners and with other members of the community. And it is my hope that we all continue to encourage individuals to please, please, is to come out to vote. The vote voter turnout has been low and we need your voice to be heard as per your vote. So please, please continue to encourage folks to come out and vote. It is a very, very important election.
Great, thank you. Mr. De Los Santos?
Thank you, Roy De Los Santos. Born and raised in Brownsville, Texas. Grew up on Southmost Road. Graduated about a high school class of ninety-two. My undergrad degrees in marketing management and I also hold a master's in business administration. I've been with AT&amp;T for over twenty-one years. I'm a senior business manager for sales operations. My experience with the company has been in working as part of a team and in leading teams in customer care, customer experience, and executive and regulatory complaints and solving people's problems. I've also got background in the hospitality and tourism industry as well as healthcare and public relations and administration. Over the last several years, I've been involved in several nonprofits, including some better festival. And that's a big one because there we lead people and it was a struggling organization when I joined and we had to find solutions to turn around that event. And it is the premier event in South Texas. We're very proud of what we've accomplished and that is as part of a team, no man could do that alone. But the experience I gained over the last fifteen years with that festival, I apply in everything else I do in life and a lot of those skills served me well even with AT&amp;T. And they've given me a lot of experience that I can bring to the city of Brownsville. Aside from that, I've served on several city boards. I'm on the Board of Adjustment right now. So I've got some real good insight and I've served for over ten years on the Board of Adjustment at South Padre Allen and in Brownsville. I've got great insight in municipal law, in state statute, and in making sure that the laws are applied fairly and equally for all citizens. I've had to go toe-to-toe with the City Commission before when I felt like citizens' rights were being violated. And I'm happy to say that by being well-prepared and doing your own homework, you can absolutely be victorious. So that's what I hope to do as a City Commissioner is fight for the things that are still lacking in our community.
Great, thank you. Mr. Elizondo? Okay, Dr. Gowen?
Hello and thank you for having the forum. My name is Rose Gowen and I was born and raised here in Brownsville on Lewis Street. And we used to ride our bikes to the city dump, which is now where Pace High School was on a regular basis and get chased by dogs while we did it. It was fun. It was a great way to grow up and I will thank my parents for that always. My father was a teacher, my mother was a homemaker. They valued Catholic education and so they moved heaven and earth to provide that for my sister and I. I grew up wanting to be a physician and thankfully with a lot of support from family and my husband, I did earn my medical doctor degree and went on to become an obstetrician and moved back home in nineteen ninety-four to make a difference in my community where I grew up. I have been very successful in doing that and it is very heartwarming to see all the children that I've delivered throughout the years now grown and adults and some returning for care themselves. About, oh, twelve years ago, I was introduced to the School of Public Health and learned about the rates of diabetes and related illnesses and felt I needed once again to do something. And that led me to write a column in the, in the newspaper that is now written by Lisa Mitchell Bennett and help with beginning a farmer's market. And really that was the introduction to politics for me. Civic engagement and learning about ordinances and zoning and a lot of red tape that really should not exist for things that are good but for the community like the farmer's market. So I ran and my constant passion is to look for areas within the community in all aspects that will impact the, the ability of people to choose healthy as, as an easy choice so that we can reduce rates of diabetes and guarantee that the next generation does not growing up, grow up rather expecting and really always becoming diabetic. This impacts our economy in more ways than most people understand. And that is my passion. My recent projects that I am extremely passionate about are completing the West Rail Trail and the Cannery Market that is very close to groundbreaking. And, and many other things that will create a vibrant community where people will want to live and where access to amenities and vibrancy is available for people of all income levels, levels and not just those with means. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Nice?
Greetings, everyone. And again, also I'd like to say thanks for inviting me to this forum. My name is Ben Nice. I'm currently the Commissioner for District Four Downtown Brownsville on the west side of the city. I was born here in Brownsville nineteen fifty-five and by the time I was about five years old, my parents divorced and I was raised by a single Hispanic mom. And that was Ruby and Oso Nice. So I know a little bit about those struggles that we're going to be talking about today. And then I went through high school, got out of Brownsville High School in nineteen seventy-three, went to Saint Mary's and got my political science degree, Bachelor of Arts in nineteen seventy-seven. Then I went on to the law school there, Saint Mary's, and got my Jewish doctor degree. And I've been practicing since nineteen eighty-one, so this is going to be my fortieth year. I was also served, serving as the municipal judge for thirty-two years for the city of Brownsville. So I have been eyewitness to lots of developments over these last thirty-two years here at the city. Directly involved as an employee or rather a public official. And also later, after I retired in twenty sixteen, I, I ran for office six months till the day I was selected and sworn into the seat. Since then, I have become a member of the Board of the Brownsville Commission, I mean the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, the Greater Brownsville and Centers Corporation, the Ters Number Three for the downtown area. I'm on the Main Street Board, also Chairman of the Osonom Center where we deal with a lot of homeless issues. And there are other areas that I've been focusing on as a Commissioner and I want to keep, continue doing that. So I'm here to present myself and I think that we can talk a lot about this affordable housing issues that you want to bring up tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Velez?
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Mitchell, for the invitation to be at this, at this forum. And well, my name is Alberto Velez. I was born here in Brownsville, Texas back in seventy-eight. I have a, I had a little bit of a different childhood. My, my parents worked here in Brownsville and I attended school in Matamoros. But I would actually spend the weekends, summers, and sometimes even the afternoons in Brownsville. My dad was a taxi driver for Brownsville Taxi Company in downtown Brownsville. And my mother worked for Model Laundry for, I don't know, until the day they closed, over twenty, twenty-some years. My grandmother also worked at Model Laundry and she lived Villa del Sol complex. I, I grew up between the two cities. I was very familiar with both. I attended Pace High School, graduated in ninety-seven and got my business degree from UTBTSC in two thousand and two. And ever since I was in high school, I was involved in, in community service. Through my years of college, I was involved in community service. I myself, I was the product of a low-income family. My dad passed away in ninety-five when I was only sixteen years old. And I just kept going. I never gave up. I went to school, managed to get my degree and become a professional. I have worked in many areas, including H&R Block, AMB Lopez Supermarket. I worked for the migrant department, MBISD. I worked for IBC Bank for a couple of years. I even worked for the City of San Benito on a project. Worked as a primary administrator for the Democratic Party back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. And since two thousand and four, I got hired by Brownsville Independent School District. I've been a teacher for the past fifteen years and I've always been involved. I've always been involved with the community. I've always been close to the low-income communities in their city, to the low-income families in Brownsville. I've been involved in different activities. I was a product also of Leadership Brownsville, which gave me the insight of a lot of things that happen in our great city that not every, every citizen or any regular person will get to see on a day-to-day basis. Throughout my years at Porter, I have been teaching business courses. I have a degree in business. I have some graduate coursework in business and education and leadership. And I try to bring that all to the table when it's, when it's all about my students. They become the citizens of our, of our great city. And it is in my best interest and the best interest of everybody that they become responsible citizens. And then they understand basically what adulthood is all about. I teach Money Matters, been teaching it for the past thirteen years. And we cover everything. I, I have met Ms. Soraima before in some of the projects that I've been involved. I was involved with the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance for ten years at Porter High School. I was a teacher that took this initiative back in twenty-ten and brought it to the school district and spread it out through all the high schools. I know what it is to work with those families that, that need this. My mother was a recipient of a grant by the city of Brownsville. And I have seen the work that you guys do and I am very grateful for what you guys are doing in our community. I feel I am the best candidate for District Four. I am a product of District Four. My family lives in District Four. My kids go to school in District Four and I do business with people in our district. I, I know almost every corner of District Four. I know the needs of District Four and I'm ready to serve. I'm doing it because I'm grateful to the city. I owe it to the city and I want to bring back a lot of those neighborhoods that have been underserved, that have been neglected for years. And I think we, we all have the same right to be looked at and to be taken care of. And a lot of the communities, it is unbelievable, but we live in one of the greatest countries on earth and we have some of the poorest communities in this country. Five years ago, we were known to be the poorest part of this great America and now we're on the other end of the table. Things are looking better and I am committed to serve and to do everything that is in the best interest of the city and obviously affordable housing is a major, major concern. I went through it myself as a teenager and I saw how my parents struggled to, to buy a house. And part of personal finance, I talk about buying a house and not only buying a house, but the, what goes after that, setting up a will and not leaving loose ends after somebody passes. It is part of, I guess, owning a house. So I think all this, it's all part of, of that combo. People need to know, not, not just get them excited about buying a house, but all the responsibility that goes with it.
Great.
So thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight.
Great, thank you very much. I believe Mr. Elizondo is with us. Mr. Elizondo? Quick introduction? I thought I saw his name pop up, so I don't want to...
Nick, I think he's having perhaps some connectivity issue because we've seen him jump on and jump off. I don't think he's on at the moment.
Okay, all right. Well, if he comes on, we can make sure that we, we get back to him. All right. Well, great. Thank you all for being with us. I now want to turn our, the rest of this program over to Soraima Diaz, who is our Director of Policy and she will kind of go through our questions. Soraima?
Thank you, Nick, for the introduction. Thank you again to all the candidates for joining us this evening and for our participants. We have a few slides of just information pertinent to the topic that we'd like to share before we start asking a few questions. All of the candidates were provided this information ahead of time. And if anyone would like a copy afterwards, please let us know. We'll make it available on our website. So one of the first things we're going to start with this evening, we know that according to the Texas A and M Real Estate Center, the Brownsville Harlingen MSA is the least affordable MSA of all twenty-six metro areas in the state of Texas. From two thousand and eleven to twenty twenty, the median sales price in the Brownsville Harlingen MSA increased from seventy-point-eight percent from a hundred and one, three hundred, a hundred and one thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Just during twenty twenty, the median sales price has risen by fifteen-point-three percent. What's important here to note is that incomes, unfortunately, median incomes have remained stagnant, hovering around thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars during this period of time. In addition to that, we also know that the proportion of homes that are available for sale under a hundred thousand dollars has decreased significantly as the median home sales price continues to rise. Given this information, what solutions do you propose to ensure that low-to-moderate income households earning less than eighty percent of the median area income are not priced out of homeownership? We would like for each of the candidates to respond. Again, we'll go in alphabetical order. We would really appreciate it if you could keep your remarks to two minutes, so we'll have enough time to get to the other questions. So Mr. Cardenas, I, well, actually I don't think he's online. Mr. Castro, if you'd like to begin?
Well, again, thank you so much for providing this information. I don't think that this information is something that is not well-known throughout the community. I think it is something that is really very, very concerning to a lot of folks, especially with a lot of the measures that have been introduced as of recent by the current City Commission. And again, one of the things that we'd hope is that for our areas that are going to be hit the hardest with a lot of the proposed measures that are being introduced, including a lot of the pet projects that have been going on in the city of Brownsville where we have not been able to bring in any economic development whatsoever into our area as the, as, as proven by the charts that you just showed in regards to the, to us being stagnant. You know, one of the things that I think is very important is to, you know, to address these issues directly. And unfortunately for us, it seems that these points only get mentioned every two years when individuals are running for office. But as is proven, I mean, we've had these issues since twenty-eleven. And I'm going to say even farther than that, we need to make sure that we produce jobs suffice to be able to let individuals be able to afford a lot of things that they, they, they would want to have here in the city of Brownsville instead of looking elsewhere. Y'all's concerns have been my concerns for, for years now, especially in regards to having our prime resource here in the city of Brownsville move away and not coming back to the city of Brownsville. And it is something that we really need to, to make mention of and actually address in a way of making folks responsible for the lack of, of, of business coming into our area. One of the things that I think has been touted constantly and regularly is, again, especially during election season, is how these big organizations are coming in and going to produce all these jobs, these high-paying jobs, which again, proven by your charts, has not happened. We need to make sure that we cater to individuals that are actually going to, to establish business here in the city of Brownsville. We need to provide some vocational training out there for our folks when certain jobs come into our area so that individuals that come and, and start these businesses or these endeavors here in the city of Brownsville don't have to be catering to individuals coming in from other parts of the country to take the jobs that should go to the people of Brownsville so that they could be able to afford homes here. Again, very, very quickly, one of the, the biggest concerns for our people here on the west side is, you know, this money that's coming in from SpaceX and the issue with gentrification and making a lot of our poorer neighborhoods and our poorer areas ill-affordable to a lot of folk out here. And it's very simple. All anyone has to do, besides looking at these charts, is look at their appraised value on their properties. Because the appraised values on, on the properties for a lot of our folk went up thirty, thirty-five, forty, some sixty thousand dollars. And that means a tax increase, no matter how much a lot of elected officials tout that they've decreased taxes, it is really, really hurting our folk. So we need to make sure that the jobs that are coming into the city of Brownsville go to our individuals, but we need to provide some form of training so that they can be well-qualified for these positions.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Mr. De Los Santos?
Thank you. I'm setting my timer so that I don't go over for you guys. So this is a great question. I really think the proper approach on this is in long run, we want to work on improving the wages, work on the economic development, work on education and work on job training. I, I don't want our first and foremost goal to be, how do we make sure that while people are at a poverty level, they can still afford to buy a house? We want to raise them up and out of that. And part of that is through economic development and bringing in better-paying jobs. And there are programs that are already engaged in that coming into our community. And, but we need to put protections in place until we can start to reap the benefits of these things that are coming into play today. So increasing the funding for down payment assistance, that's something that I see that you all already recommend. That's something I agree with completely. One of the other big items for me, especially when we talk about promoting new construction, one of the reasons we don't have enough of that, especially in the area of affordable housing, is because our permitting process is horrendous. Out in my capacity as a member of the Board of Adjustment, we have builders, developers, property owners that come through all the time and consistently, 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 I have heard for years, Brownsville is the hardest city to work with in South Texas. I know commercial real estate brokers who have clients that are opening businesses all over Texas and they come and they just drive through our city. And because of the layout, because of the planning that, that hasn't been comprehensive and properly laid out for the future, they just turn away immediately. For those that think that they could still make it work, they look into Brownsville some more and they find out it's going to be a rat race and the bureaucracy of trying to get a permit and trying to get things done drags on forever. We all know time is money. So the, the best way that we can do that is to revamp that process, make Brownsville the premier city to do business with, especially when it comes to opening a new business, creating a new subdivision, new development, anything it is that someone wants to do that requires a permit. It should be a one-stop shop at our downtown offices and someone should be an advocate for those applicants from start to finish.
Thank you, Mr. De Los Santos. Dr. Gowen?
Thank you. And so I think the first thing that we have to do is something that, that I personally have supported and others have as well. And that is to support our housing authority and CDCB in your efforts. You have done an exceptional job of reaching out to people and not just building little box homes, but rather having the people themselves have a say in the way their homes look and how they're configured and really engage them and educate them so that they can be homeowners that are happy and productive and, and really remain in their homes with the education and the support that you give them, not to mention the wonderful down payment assistant, assistance programs that you provide. In terms of the housing authority, I would point out the El Hadidin downtown is just about to be hopefully approved. It's on the last pieces of approval. And the, the project is a tax credit project that would not have been very competitive if it hadn't been for the fact that the city had a downtown development plan in place and it turns in place already. Those things that we did in anticipation of trying to encourage people to live in the downtown area of mixed income levels made a tax credit project like that much more competitive. Same with Trail Village, same with... Same with Trail Village, same with many of the projects that you, that you promote as well. Support the low-income builders and the low-income houser, Housing Authority. Certainly, we need to increase wages as much as we can locally and support the increase of wages on a federal level. And certainly, we need to promote economic development. And although, although it's never perfect, there has been great, there have been great strides in economic development, job force and workforce training. We have worked with TSC and Workforce Solution and the, the organization that you mentioned when you did your introduction, Nick, to provide opportunities and education for our, our people to be able to be job workforce-ready. And that needs to continue and even build in robustness. And when I say workforce-ready, I mean education. I mean, training, if not a degree, but training. And I also mean health and wellness because workforce-ready means that you are healthy enough to hold a job and maintain it for a good, long while without becoming disabled along the way. We need to connect, as a city, we need to connect industry with our labor force, and we are working on ways to do that and improved methods. And, and overall, do a good job at increasing jobs, increasing wages, improving people's health, and supporting them once they do become a homeowner, whether that home is enormous or whether that home is tiny or whether it's an apartment condominium complex or multifamily home, and support that in a multi-generational way, since many of our families are, live in multi-generational situations. Affording a home, building a home, is not just about a house. It's about supporting and building a family and empowering them to thrive. And that is what I support, and I will support you in continuing to do so and all the things that I listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gowan. Mr. Nice.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, where do I start? We'll start with permitting. Just last night, and, and the complaints that were aired just now. Last night, we authorized a purchase of some extensive software, which happens to be the exact same software that McCalleen uses. And this software makes it so easy to initiate a project. They, they can do it literally from their own office. Everything from scheduling their appointments, submitting their digital plans, all their designs. And this, this software, in conjunction with our complete unification of all the building codes, is set Brownsville way ahead of the pack here. Okay, so, you know, that comparison with McCalleen, you can forget about that now. So, there, the unified code, and then throw into the, the mix, the E-Bridge Center downtown for helping businesses who want to start up, go through the permitting processes, go through the P U B processes. It's all going to be a lot easier and it's all right on the horizon. And going to number two here, it's not that it just started here this last two years or right before this election. This is a long process. Over the last four years, there's been a restructuring of a lot of these things. And I'm, I'm just touching on those right now because we're talking about affordable housing. So, as you know, Nick and, and the others, y'all are doing a great job downtown at the Salmono Security Building. The Housing Authority is doing a great job at the El Hardin. And that's because the city has been supporting them, not just right now, two weeks before the election. Okay, we've been working for their tax credits. We've been doing other things, providing a TURS, which helps not only downtown, but in other projects throughout that community, TURSes are available and also tax incentives can be sought out as well. So, these are things that we actually are doing and we're, and we're, you know, trying to find newer things, other things to make it streamlined. Because when I first came in, I issued three, well, right before I retired, it issued three warrants for bribery for three of the permitting guys. Okay, that's when I just knew that the, the town was messed up and I had to do something. So, I decided to run. I retired and ran, and those guys got convicted and the things have changed since then, just so you know. All right, so the other thing is that P U B needs to step up to the plate. There needs to be some restructuring of the, of the impact fees. And to where, right now, we have three zones to make it easier, like it's less expensive downtown, where there's already, you know, structures standing and as you go out. But that can be tweaked out some more. And this is something that should be relying on public input. So, and there have been many workshops in conjunction with these committees and other types of forums that have been held for public input, which is very important and which we have used during the last four years, at least while I've been there, to input and integrate into what we're planning and what we're doing. So, that's, that's my talk on affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. Mr. Bellis.
All right, so, this goes back to, this question definitely goes back to, I, I've been going over how five years ago, we were known as the poorest city and the poorest communities in the whole country, Cameron County as a whole and Brownsville specifically. So, this has been going on for many years. And all those families in the low to moderate income, I guess brackets, they struggle to find a decent home in town. And there's programs out there, like you guys, that are trying to, 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 I guess, break this, this gap and bridge these low-income families with affordable housing and a decent house, decent home. Right now, in the current conditions that we're in, this, this unprecedented pandemic has caused chaos with affordable housing. Just in over a year, the prices of building a new house have gone up to three, in some cases, some of the material has gone up 400, 500%. So, talking about doing something right now is gonna be just a patch. This, now, one of the biggest challenges we have in people not earning decent incomes, unfortunately, a lot of the citizens of this, this great city of Brownsville are on survival mode. And they'll rather make a few bucks just to bring something to the table. The closing of the borders has been a big challenge because it is no secret to all of us that a lot of people from across were being hired for low wages. So, right now, we're on survival mode. We are bringing our own people to do the jobs that many others were doing before. And at this time, paying labor has gone up, materials have gone up, and has caused building a new house go up in price. Or at the federal level, we are experiencing a reflation. Our federal government has stimulated our economy to a point where the demand is much higher than the supply, and that is causing prices to go up again. At this point, I think we need to be cautious, all of us. We need to be cautious of what we do. The needs for affordable housing is still going to be present. Our ecosystem is different. We're right on the border. And the way we operate and the way we live and, and our demographics are very different than McCalleen than the most cities away from the border. We're really next to the river. So, yes, ma'am.
Just want, I don't want to cut you off, but we're trying to keep everyone to two minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
So, we can get to the rest of the questions.
No. All right, so, I guess, but at, at the end, part of what we need to continue to do is support programs like CDCB. And I know the city has its own grants program. And I know the county and other entities are doing their part. And I think coming together and creating a synergy could be a remedy for this, this constant issue that we have.
Thank you. And, and to dovetail off of what Mr. Mr. Bellis and all of the candidates mentioned, we know that there has been a disproportionate impact in terms of public health and economic security instability on households of color and low to moderate income households across the United States over the last 12 months. Some of you might know that although CDCB has a focus traditionally on homeownership, we're also very concerned with housing stability and instability for individuals who are tenants. Now, despite the National Moratorium, the CDC Moratorium on Evictions that was issued in March, the documents that we were able to collect directly from the JP Courts in Cameron County indicate that 551 evictions were filed from April through December of 2020. Again, this was during the CDC eviction moratorium. The moratorium has now been extended until June. What strategies do you propose to stabilize housing specifically for tenants in this moment? And we'll begin again with Mr. Castro.
Well, thank you for the question. Let me just touch on something very quick. You did mention that the health crisis that has been going on for the past year with the pandemic and is still going on. And I think one of the things that has been very concerning to a lot of us here is, you know, that our local entities have been adhering to a lot of the recommendations and suggestions from the CDC and from the federal government in regards to individuals being able to get kicked out of their homes. And again, it goes back to individuals not being able to, you know, to, to pay their rent. But I, I don't think it's, it's been a, an issue solely because of the pandemic. It is something that goes back into economic development. We don't have the monies here for our individuals to be able to afford. And with the continuing rise in, in costs of everything that is around us, it, it just, there's just no way to balance anything out. It's very, very unfortunate. A lot of our youth have to start working at an early age instead of dedicating their time to their studies because of this. But, you know, we have a lot of our high school students, folks, a lot of our high school students that are supporting their households in part because of the parent units. And as one of the candidates mentioned, you know, the single parent home, we find a lot of these here. And guys, we need to, to make sure that we are doing everything in our power, you know, to, 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 to deal with the issues that are most concerning to individuals. And one of the most concerning issues for our folks is, you know, where they're going to lie their head at night and that they're going to be able to have a home, a home to go back to and a home to call their own. But again, our seed leadership has failed us and has been failing us for the past 12 years. And again, I go back to the charts that you shared. For the past 12 years, we've been stagnant. And, you know, one of the things that I, I'm, I'm hoping is that the citizens of Brownsville are, you know, are fed up with 12 years of being stagnant, where monies that should have been gone back to the people of the city of Brownsville have been spent on, on, on special nicks out there, you know, special projects, some things that appease one board member than benefit a certain group and not the city of Brownsville as a whole. You know, we don't want to be the poorest community in the country anymore. You know, we want our...
You, you reached your two minutes. I'm sorry to cut you off, but we're going to have to go to the next candidate. We will have an opportunity to return. Thank you. Mr. De Los Santos.
Thank you. And this is a tough one. This is not a one-faceted issue. And I know that the question is looking at this from the perspective of specifically for the tenants. But this isn't just an issue that affects tenants. This is an issue that affects landlords as well. Because while there's a moratorium on evictions, is there a moratorium on foreclosures? Because those property owners still have to pay their mortgages and pay their bills as well. And they still have to feed their families for someone that has rental properties. And that's how they survive, and that's how they make their living. They're in a pretty bad situation right now. The other thing we need to think about is, as a city, whatever possible protections we can put in place locally, and we've seen this happen through the pandemic, can be overridden by the state of Texas and can be overridden by the federal government. And anytime any city's proactive in doing things, folks who have the money and the power to do stuff will start lobbying and buying special interests in Austin. And suddenly, they pass something that overrides anything that we could do to protect people. If somebody with more lobbying and more PAC dollars goes out there and wants to protect the banks instead of the tenants or the property owners instead of the tenants. So, I think we, as a city, what we need to do, what we can do, we need to look at lobbying our state officials and making sure that laws are passed at the state level that protect both the property owner and the tenant. That way, it's enforceable. Because if we have to go to court with the state every time we want to do something to protect either the tenant or the property owner, nothing ever gets accomplished and the people are not served.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Gowan.
Thanks. It is a tricky issue, as, as Mr. Little Santos alluded to, because there are two people, the tenant and the landlord. And I think one thing that this city can do is to promote or provide opportunities for the landlords to connect with the tenants and get to know each other so that they can talk about many, perhaps some common areas or common ground that they can reach together. I know some communities are working on mediation programs for situations like this. And I know that some cities are, and I'm not sure whether Brownsville is or not, perhaps Commissioner Nice can answer this, whether or not if you're evicted, you're allowed to have counsel present when you, when you go through all of that. And I don't know the answer to that. We do know that many people that are evicted eventually become homeless, and we do want to protect against that. And, and certainly, public health is, is a big, is a big part of it. Because as I said, you, if you are not healthy, you cannot hold a job. Or maybe you're healthy, but you have to stay home and take care of your grandmother or your brother or sister or parent, and that makes it difficult as well. And I would take a second to take my hat off to CDCB because you have been our constant partner in public health for all the many programs that we have conducted and are seeing scientifically rates of diabetes reduce over the last 10 years. So, we can prove that the rates of diabetes have decreased, and that is in large part to the partners like yourselves. And, and the, and I think that as we retain, help, help people to retain their jobs, we will also impact the rates of eviction. So, working together with tenants and landlords, education as you provide to educate families on how to manage their money is important. Looking into whether or not folks are allowed counsel and mediation programs, I think, are, are very important as well as promoting the federal government to extend the eviction moratorium so that we at the state and even local level can do so as well, if that, if that suits.
Thank you, Dr. Gowan.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Castro.
I'm going to say goodbye. I have worship service. Thank you all so, so very much. Thank you to all the candidates that showed up. Thank you all for holding this.
God bless you, Mr. Castro.
Thank you for participating. Thank you. Mr. Nice.
Okay, thank you. Contrary to what Mr. Castro was saying, things aren't stagnant. And CDCB is a perfect example. But even beyond that, you have what the Housing Authority has done, over $100 million in projects that, over the last eight to 10 years, that have been in process. Okay, and we're going to see the culmination of one. So, speaking about stabilization, okay, evictions. First of all, we cannot, the city cannot preempt state or federal law. Okay, we cannot do that. Now, what we can do is try to have cooperation and collaboration between the JP Courts that handle the evictions and the governor's office that is setting the, the orders out on whether evictions can be taken out or not, the moratorium, in other words. Now, there's another thing. Y'all have been throwing out a lot of figures here, but some of them are not quite, I, I don't know. I'm not going to argue with them, but for example, the evictions, there are not just evictions based on rent non-payment. There are other eviction, eviction types, like you didn't get your insurance, which could be an economic, or you didn't do this or that. So, that's a mixed number in there. But I'm not minimizing it because it's a real thing. And working at the Osonom like I do, it's heartbreaking to see people landing over there. So, what do we do? We had, we have stuff like rapid rehousing. And we have assistance with social workers to help people get their license or get their birth certificate or whatever they need to get back into the system and get, get back to be productive. And in, in addition to that, as mentioned here a minute ago, the CDCB has resources, and so does the Housing Authority. One criticism I would have is the time, the turnaround time for somebody who just got kicked out and, and wants to get into an apartment, their husband kicked them out with their children or whatever it might be. There's lots of heart-wrenching stories out there. So, one, you know, the, the usual path is I go to the Osonom, I save the 30 to 60 days. During that time, we're getting processed to get home, you know, assistance. We're getting processed to get home, you know, assistance to the Housing Authority or the Cameron County Housing Authority. So, so these are things that can be tweaked, but it's not like there's, we're stagnant and not doing anything about this. We, we do all these things already. So it doesn't mean we can't tweak them and make them better. So the Cameron County Bar Association, the Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid can be, okay, thank you. But they can be called on for assistance in stopping or delaying evictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niese. I think Ms. Bradshaw has joined us. Ms. Bradshaw, if you would like to join in and answer the, the second question. We have two minutes for each candidate. Okay, perhaps she's not able to speak at this point. Mr. Bellis, if you'd like to go next, you have two minutes.
All right, on the, on this particular topic, I guess one of the, the possible answers is communication. Communication with landlords, communication with tenants, communication, it's a key component in everything we do. And perhaps being creative, there's many landlords out there that are very, very structured and they're not lenient and they're not flexible when they're working with their tenants. And maybe we can offer somebody to be a mediator and talk with them. I have helped people that have been in situations where they've been borderline to being evicted. And maybe now negotiating with the landlord about, hey, how about we, we set up payment plan where we can pay instead of paying monthly, we can pay every week or every two weeks. Redo contracts. Redrafting contracts is another possibility. Because at the end of the day, we don't want anybody out in the streets. And we don't, why have empty, empty buildings, empty houses, empty apartments? And have people sleeping out on the streets? I think we, we're a city that everybody should have the opportunity to spend a night in a decent home. And if we communicate and we interact and we bring everybody involved to the table, we can find solutions. This situation, this pandemic has brought us, we're experiencing the aftermath of COVID, even though it's not over. But we will get through this and things are going to get better. And I'm sure landlords specifically will probably have a tough time in the next few months. But I am positive that things are going to get better. And if the city can do something to interact with, with your office and other organizations, like has been mentioned before, the Brownsville Housing Authority and the Cameron County Housing Authority, I'm sure that solutions can be identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Ms. Bradshaw, if you can hear us now and if you'd like to respond.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me, even though I, I just barely squeezed out of another meeting. Thank you for hosting this forum. So in regards to proposing this, you know, stabilized housing specifically for tenants, I think it's already been mentioned in some cases, you know, we also have landlords that are feeling, feeling the pinch because of COVID. And, you know, as, as a commissioner or as someone in leadership, you know, we have to understand that there's always obviously two sides to each coin. And by no means do we want anyone to go homeless. And we don't want even landlords who in some cases, in, in many cases, especially in our community, provide affordable housing for individuals. So how do we balance the two? You know, we've spoken about mediation and that's, you know, that's something that is, it's very good in order to keep stability within our community. And I also believe that, you know, part of affordable housing is to understand the needs of what I, you know, what I, I call or maybe others call transitional housing. Do we have enough housing available so that maybe when individuals who can't, who are having a hard time paying for a two bedroom, one bath or a three bedroom, one bath apartment, is there a way for them to move into housing that is more affordable for their needs? Now, I understand with COVID, it's a special situation. And, and these are very extenuating circumstances, but just in general, regardless of whether we're under a pandemic or not, you know, do we have this kind of housing, this transitional housing available? And, and I don't mean housing that, for example, that is, you know, a shelter. Because sometimes, you know, that obviously is, is not feasible for some. But what are we doing to be able to help people move from something that is more expensive to something that is less expensive and that we can help through grants or through, I, I think it was mentioned earlier, the assistance, assistance that we can give, that we can give our community for that. So I'm a big proponent of that, this transitional housing. So we need to have something for every level. On a different note, I believe that while we have our school districts in other cities, they've taken the initiative to provide training programs, very simple training programs that teach very, you know, professional but yet basic skills. Photography, flower arranging, for example, cake decorating, cake baking, you name it. To where people can, in these circumstances can say, you know what, I can work and do something from home, which will allow me to at least be able to pay some bills and, and provide beyond what assistance I can get. So, you know, again, as a commissioner, we need to evaluate different avenues, of course, mediation, landlords' understanding and us, you know, helping them with their needs. But what can we do with the community? And we always need to be cognizant of the fact we need to have something for everyone. And let's not forget our tenants who maybe lack some of, of the basic skills or abilities to, to, to share their talents and be able to also make money in the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bente Bradshaw. We're going to move on to our final question. Given the existing limited supply of affordable housing, and many have mentioned this is not just an outcome of the last year, what specific policies or program intervention do you propose to create pathways to long-term housing affordability, especially to protect against real estate speculation? We'll start again. Take it from the top. Mr. Castro, oh, I forgot, Mr. Castro is no longer with us. Mr. De La Santos. He might have jumped off.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Dr. Gowan.
Yes. So I, I think that communication is again, and, and planning is again, are again, important things. I think that we have to have a very clear housing plan and roadmap. We just redid our Unified Development Code. We need to continue working very closely with our developers so that communication with them and needs are, are very clear. And, and that everybody's aligned and working in the same direction. I think we need to continue supporting you, CDCB, as well as the Brownsville Housing Authority in your expertise to be able to continue to provide affordable housing. And we need to do what we can and what we have been doing and more as a city to support the efforts that you have so that your contracts and your projects are more competitive and more likely to be awarded. I think that there are things happening at the federal level as well. I, I was reading that President Biden just recently began talking about granting tax credits and grants to cities that change, cities that change their zoning that would then bolster access to affordable housing. And that's something that they've just begun talking about. And I'm hoping that that will come to fruition and we can take advantage of that. So I think we need to do what we can to, to promote those types of policies on a federal and state level. Curb zoning that disproportionately hurts low income families and take a good look at that as well. And, and really, it is hard to tell a developer, you know what, you can't develop that tract of land. But if the developer understands the goals that we are looking at, then I think they're much more likely to work with us. I think that we have done a good, great job looking at places like Trail Village and Point Setta Gardens and your developments as well with LEED certified homes that are low income homes that I would love to live in. And I think we need to educate our developers that these things are possible. And it does, and it, in low income development can be beautiful and, and desirable. And, and, and our, our folks should deserve that. You shouldn't have to be a wealthy person to afford green space near your home or sidewalks or energy efficient homes and so forth. So I think all of those things, communication, education, alignment are all very important. And keeping an eye on state and federal changes that we can take advantage of.
Thank you, Dr. Gowan. Mr. Niese.
Thank you. Okay, so I know that the forum is focusing on affordable housing, but I think it's pretty clear that all housing is, there's a shortage in all levels of housing right now in the city. And we need to solve all these problems. But when we go back to affordable housing and the people who are affected the most, I think that you, even though we talked about the pandemic as being, you know, a bad thing, which of course it is, it has also provided opportunities for us. We have gotten millions of dollars from the federal government to assist in things like what we're talking about today. But unfortunately, and part of my frustration is that the commission doesn't really have as much of a sway on the administration necessarily as we each are supposed to be held accountable for, like in this forum. There are a lot of, you know, things that we like to do that just don't get done. So I'm calling on my fellow commissioners, whoever they may be, to, to reel in the administration and help direct exactly where these funds go to. And one of the big problems being a commissioner is your inability to just get, you know, things done without getting that, that consensus during a meeting. And so I, I call on anyone who might be elected or who is still there and will retain their seat to hold the administration accountable on the use of those funds because that is where we can get ahead or get back caught up with some of the problems that have been outlined today. So these COVID funds are actually like an opportunity. Okay? So there's other things that can be done, like PUB. You know, there's a lot of controversy there. PUB should be able to start providing grants or incentives to be able to help the ones that are most affected by all this. Is that my time already?
It is.
You know, somebody's flown. Okay, well, the last thing, the chart here shows that there's a, the chart on home sales price median income, it basically shows that there is already gentrification going on in our city, which is a kind of supposedly a big issue for a lot of people. So it's a citywide thing that's been going on for 10 years. And gentrification, although it's vilified, it has many benefits that in my opinion outweigh the, the, the detriments. And since I first got in, one of the first meetings I went to was with the Housing Authority about the Buena Vida neighborhood and how we were going to help prevent gentrification. So that's another myth that nothing's been done or it's never been talked about. With the, the Housing Authority and the Buena Vida neighborhood are on top of this and they're working on solutions which the city should fully support. So that's, that's my take on that last part, that last question. And I want to thank you for letting, letting me a part, be a part of this forum and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Niese. Ms. Bente Bradshaw, just since you were, you joined late, just a reminder, we're asking for each of the candidates to keep their remarks to two minutes. This is the final question. And then after this round, we will ask everyone or provide everyone with an opportunity for a one minute closing. So if you'd like to go next. I, we're not able to hear you. I'm not sure if you want to take yourself off mute.
That's what it was. Sorry. Okay, got it. All right. So in regards to real estate speculation and what can we do to protect against that? As a former real estate professional and coming up soon to again enter the field, real estate speculation is something that we cannot completely prevent. And regardless of what the economy is at any given point in time, with pandemic or no pandemic, we are going to have real estate speculators. It's just something that happens, whether it's house flipping or, you know, which is typically what we actually call house flipping. Now, there are circumstances, and I have noticed it and seen it in Brownsville, where individuals will speculate on real estate and they will purchase a home from someone who was in desperate need. And in many times, in some cases, they will, what I call squat on this home. And they will sit and this home will remain dilapidated, it will remain dilapidating in a community. And, and in essence, that home is being blocked from someone who really needs it and who at the time found it affordable to actually live there. And what we do or what we have seen is a way for a real estate bubble, fix up the home and then sell it at a much higher price. In this case, having had blocked a previous, a possible homeowner who could have benefited from that property and built some equity. So those things do happen in Brownsville and that needs to, you know, how do we prevent that? The city needs to create a regulation where if someone purchases it, in this case, a speculator purchases a home, they cannot let it sit there and be in dilapidate itself until the next bubble. It, it's a blight on neighborhoods and it prevents someone from purchasing that home. The, the city, I think, should also create incentives and tax credits for people who live in communities. If they're fixing their home, they should be able to get some tax benefit from that. Now, these are just, these are long-term housing affordability plans and ideas because not everyone is necessarily going to be able to purchase a lovely, you know, an affordable home right off the bat. Sometimes it's the affordability of one's current home rather than something, than something else. So we can help those current homeowners by offering them one tax credit as they repair their home, prevent speculators from sitting on real estate that could benefit someone else just while they wait for the next real estate bubble. And so those are, you know, some of the ideas that I have as a real estate professional and I would try, definitely try to implement as a city commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bellis, if you would like to go now, question number three.
All right, well, it goes back to communication. This, this, this question, it's, I mean, as it is implied, it's a long-term solution. There is programs already in place to teach the youth about different programs and different opportunities that are out there for them. Very few people are aware that the BISD has a philanthropy program in place that it's only, it is available to a few students and all the high schools, that there is a Money Smart Ambassador program. And I think part of this solution is education and educating from a young age about homeownership. And as we prepare the youth to become responsible citizens and homeowners, we are being part of the solution as bringing housing affordability. It is, we live in a free enterprise society where we are at the mercy of supply and demand. So we don't really have a lot of control of what's going to happen. Ms. Bente brought up some very good points as to some of these people that are in the, in the construction business and in the house flipping business are doing. And unfortunately, they're hurting some individuals from becoming homeowners at affordable prices. My parents, when they first bought the house in 95, it was a small house and it needed a lot of work. But there was pretty much what they could afford to buy. Back then it was $27,000. And that house eventually needed a lot of investment. I myself, I bought a house for $36,000 back in 2008. And those houses, they're, they're no longer worth that much. They have inflated twice as much in some case, in some cases even three times as much. So I think an education program and helping people understand when is the best time for them to buy a house according to their financial situation, it's part of the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. With that, we have reached our time. Unfortunately, I'm sure we all agree we could go on for hours on this topic. We want to take this opportunity to thank each of the candidates. I know a couple of them did have to jump off early and they let us know ahead of time they had previous commitments. But we appreciate you taking the time to participate. We appreciate you taking the time to review the materials that we shared ahead of the, the forum this evening. We also just want to encourage everyone in the audience to please go to our website and check- to please go to our website and check all of the fact sheets, blog posts that we have specific to the information that was discussed today. If you're an audience member and you have an issue that you'd like to lift up, something that you would like for CDCB to investigate further, please send us an email. In addition to that, we also just want to remind everyone that since June, CDCB has administered over nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars specifically for emergency rental assistance and mortgage assistance in our region. We are currently in the process of administering twelve point seven million dollars for Cameron County specifically for emergency rental assistance and we'll link that in the chat as well. Please encourage anyone that you know to apply online. They can receive assistance for rent that they owe back to March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty, as well as for future rent payments for three months at a time. In addition to that, we still are administering assistance for individuals who are behind their mortgage. So please just help us spread the word. In addition to applying online, also know that we have twenty locations throughout Cameron County where individuals can pick up a paper application if they're not able to apply online. As we close, we'd like to just invite each of you to give a one-minute closing statement. And at this point, we will begin with Dr. Cowan.
Thank you again for hosting this forum. Um, I have learned a lot of things about affordable housing from you through the years and I've learned a lot more tonight. And I think that I know that I will continue to support you and the Brownsville Housing Authority with your expertise and the things that, the things that we've all spoken about that we can provide together for our people. There are no thriving, vibrant places filled with sick people. There are no vibrant, thriving places that we want to visit or we want to live in. And it's my passion to reduce the rates of diabetes among us so that the next generation is not guaranteed to grow up becoming diabetic or expecting to become diabetic. Workforce ready, thriving vibrancy requires health. And health touches nearly every single aspect of what the city of Brownsville does in some corner or field of it. And it will be my passion to continue to work towards finding those corners, supporting and bolstering the ability of our next generation and our current generation to be healthy mentally, physically, as well as economically. Thank you for inviting us and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Cowan. Mr. Nice.
Okay, well, in closing, I too would like to thank the CDCB and also congratulate you on such a wonderful job that you've been doing. It's really important. And I want to emphasize that the, this housing issue is just as important as a COVID issue and it kind of feeds off of it actually. But like I said earlier, I think there's opportunities to, to spin this to where we can turn it into an advantage. And so in closing, keep up the good work and count on me as I have in the past to help approve or sign resolutions for your tax credits and all the other assistance that you need from the city. I'll do my best to marshal the assets that are coming our way through the COVID funds that are being distributed around and to be seeing that they're used properly and appropriately. So with that, I'm going ahead, I'm going to go ahead and yield the balance of my time to Mr. Cardenas.
I don't think that Mr. Cardenas has joined us, but Ms. Puente Bradshaw, if you'd like to give your closing remark, one minute.
Okay. Uh, thank you to CDCB and for all that you do for our community, especially as you mentioned, Ms. Diaz, about the work that you're currently doing for those who have in, in need of the rental assistance and mortgage assistance as well. I mean, I'm sure they should thank you from the bottom of their heart and I thank you from the bottom of my heart because a, a community that has housing is a happy community. And, you know, people have a hierarchy of needs that must be met to live these happy lives. And having a home is one of them. And I will say that through my block walks that I've been doing for these past couple of weeks, I've met people from all walks of life, including people who live in, currently in, in what is affordable housing, whether it be two apartments or homes of their own. And, and it's, it's, it's just a great thing to see that people are happy and comfortable. And so as your city commissioner, for those of you that are watching, it will always be a priority of mine to make sure that we have a happy, thriving community and affordable housing will be one of those measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puente Bradshaw. And Mr. Bellis, you are final candidate for one minute to conclude your statements.
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you, everyone at CDCB. For the kind of work you guys are doing, I, I myself, I've seen the final products, the homes that have been built specifically in District Four, beautiful homes, homes that are going to last for a long time and bring security and bring freedom and bring happiness to a lot of families in our community. My goal is to make sure that every citizen of Brownsville feels proud to be part of Brownsville and feels happy living in Brownsville. And that loves Brownsville as much as I do. I, I cannot express enough how happy I am that, that I'm part of this community and that all the benefits that me and my family, my mother, my mother-in-law have received from the city of Brownsville. And I want to make sure that other people have the information that they need. Look for help. The help is out there, but sometimes it takes knowing somebody or knocking on the right door or not giving up or knocking on doors to find the guidance and the assistance and the support. And obviously, living in, in a decent home, it should be a pretty much everybody's main, main goal. Part of what I teach in personal finance is we discuss needs and wants. And obviously shelter, it's on the very top. Uh, it's one of those things that is part of our survival. So understanding homeownership and looking for affordable housing and being a responsible citizen, it's part of what I try to do in the classroom. And I'm sure that as a commissioner, I can promote that. I'm all for, for communication and education and support and building bridges to close those gaps where a lot of people are being left behind. Thank you for this opportunity and, and for giving us this, this forum to express our concerns about this, this very, very concerning topic in our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bellis, and thank you to all of our candidates. As we wrap up this evening, again, we just would like to remind you, please take a minute, go to our website. If you have an issue that you would like for us to investigate further, send us an email. We are also constantly watching the Texas Legislative Session in this season as well as analyzing federal policy. Several commissioners mentioned the cities Brownsville and Cameron County are set to receive sizable funds as part of the American Rescue Plan. We're focused on how we can utilize those again to create affordable housing opportunities for the households that we serve. As we close this evening, we just want to leave you with a few remarks. We realize, again, as practitioners on the ground, that the clients that we serve face complex social realities and our work with them reveals that they are contagiously hopeful, persistent in their pursuit of better opportunities, entrepreneurial in all of their financial endeavors, resourceful in how they leverage social and financial capital, creative in their approach to challenging the status quo and resilient in the face of formidable opposition, especially given what we've seen in the last twelve months. Market trends and structural inequalities that are often out of their control. At CDCB, we remain committed and we thank you for joining us in this commitment as collaborative partners. We hope that you'll be encouraged by our work, that you'll continue to join us in our journey as we highlight a narrative that reflects the hope, tenacity, resilience and dignity that families deserve as they purchase their first home, as they build wealth for themselves, our community, our city and our region. Thank you again for joining us this evening. We are extremely appreciative of your time and your commitment to the public service.